Okay, I'd like to call this meeting in order. Are we okay there? Calling in order. First, we'd like to do our invocation. Mr. Keith, if you wouldn't mind, do an invocation for us.
Yes, sir.
Glad to speak. Gracious to him, the Father, we thank you, dear Lord, for another day's journey. God, we ask that you will continue to watch over us, bless us, keep us in your care, and forgive us for our sins. Now, we ask, Lord, as you come into this meeting, lead us, guide us, and direct us. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Now, if you stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. All right. Next is approval of minutes. I'll review the minutes. Does anybody have any questions about the minutes? Make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second. That passes. All right, so we come to PC-2024-24, request to zone NC-15 pending annex to the property located at 2499 West Edgeville Road, identified as Florence County Tax Map Number 01221-01-140. Staff report, please.
All right. These are the kind we love. That's a donut hole infill in Windsor Forest. As you can see, surrounded by, on all four sides, by properties that are in city limits. He would just like to get his trash picked up and all the good things that come up being in the city. Zoning of NC-15, which is very appropriate for the use and for the surrounding zoning. Neighborhood conservation for the future land use map as well. Here's a photo of the house. And that concludes staff's report.
All right. This is a public hearing matter, so what I'll do is I'll call for the public hearing now. Anyone who is in favor of this can come up and stand, give us their name. And anybody not in favor of this can do the same. So I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Okay. Second thing is PC-2024-25. It's a request for a minutes sketch plan review of Woolly Street Town Homes located at 189 Woolly Street, Tax Map Number 90074-03-012. Staff report, please.
All right. This is a sketch plan that was approved by you last month or two months ago. The only reasons before you again is because when a change is made to a sketch plan that's more than 10%, we cannot approve it administratively by staff, so it has to come back to you all. And since there were five, and they want to add one more parcel to this, so that's more than 10%, so it's before you. Nothing else has changed. Again, it's on the corner of Chevis and Warley Streets and involves its zoned central business district. And the future land use map calls for it to be urban downtown, which is a urban mixed-use designation as well. So in the central business district regarding parking, off-street parking is not required. On-street parking is to be shared and may not be allocated to individual owners or businesses unless a valet parking agreement in the form and of content to the satisfaction of the city attorney is approved by the planning commission. And no such request has been made to the planning commission as yet. The updated plat does provide for seven parking spaces to go along with six units and as well as on-street parking would be expected to go along with that. Other than that, the plat does meet, does satisfy the requirements. So that concludes staff's report.
Okay. Any staff questions?
So it's going from five to six, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Well, I see people here tonight. This is not a public hearing, but I'm gonna, as the chairman, I'm gonna allow public input. They came here tonight. I want to hear what they have to say. So what I'll do is I'll just call whoever up to the podium. You give your name and your address, and if you're for or against, we'll ask anybody who wants to speak in favor of this to please come to the podium. We want to hear what you have to say. Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. My name is Chris Coffin. My address is 1413 DeBerry Boulevard, Florence, South Carolina. First of all, I want to thank you all for serving. Again, my name is Chris Coffin. I've lived in Florence for 25 years plus now. My business partner, Teddy Dowling, has been building homes in Florence, beautiful homes in Florence, for 20-plus years. I'm sure he probably will have something to say as well. But our goal as a partnership is to build beautiful homes, beautiful residences in downtown Florence. And we want to continue to make Florence grow and be vibrant. And the way I think about it in my mind is I want, you know, young people to want to come back to Florence that have left or whatever to come back and live downtown. Many of them are looking for that. I would like to see, you know, medical professionals at McLeod and Hope Health build a wheel their bike out of their front door and pedal to work. And I'd like to see empty nesters like myself. I personally would like to live downtown one day. But so all that's kind of just, you know, our goal. I wanted to share that. But then, so the last meeting, you approved five units, and at that time, this is my first, kind of, this is our first development project downtown. I didn't understand that in the overlay district, which this property falls into, that the setbacks, I had the setbacks wrong in my mind or in our minds. So once we found out that and we saw that zoning would approve or that it did fall into the guidelines that we could add a six unit, that's why we're back here before you again this evening. A question could come up about parking. So we do have the seven spaces there. There is, as staff reported, there's on-street parking, and also there is two parking garages within just a couple of blocks away. But also, we are very confident that local businesses, a couple of, or at least one, would be willing to either rent the tenant space or parking space or either, or either possibly even us in the future. So that's just another consideration I was thinking about. And the thing that came to, that I just was told last week and I confirmed is the Emerson, is the Emerson apartments are just down the street, on Chevis Street as well, and there's 83 units there. And to my surprise, they do not have any designated parking for those 83 units because it falls into this overlay district as well. But in conclusion, you know, we just want to do an upgrade to this property. We think it'll be good for the neighborhood. We think it'll be a vibrant area for people to live. And just really thank you for your time, and we would be honored and blessed with your approval for this endeavor that we're undertaking.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to speak in for the project? Sure.
My name is Teddy Dowling. I live at 2346 Oliver Road. I'm working with Chris on the project. We, it's been exciting getting to work with Elaine and Derek and kind of learning what ordinance we have and seeing the downtown revitalize. And, you know, part of what makes a vibrant downtown is the density and having, you know, you walk downtown, you don't feel like you're alone because you've got people all around you. And so I think part of that, it's a good and a bad that you don't have as much parking. But right now, we've really got too much parking. If you ride down Chevis Street, you see empty parking lots all over the place. So anyway, I think, I think this will be a very positive thing that we're asking for. I think we might even add another unit, but we're not looking to do that. So that's about all I got to say.
Okay. All right. Anyone here to speak against the project? Give us your name and where you live.
I'm only gonna talk. Can y'all hear me?
Just give us your name and where you live.
I'm Dr. Larry Hayden. I'm a practicing dentist here on 185 Darling, 187 Darling, where am I talking to? Let me think just a minute. One, I've heard 189, one address that we, Woolly Street. I've been there 60 years. I practice every day. I'm gonna try to brief this as quickly as I can. I'm a little confused because I've been upset about this whole project since the initial start. I'm totally against the addition of the square footage that has been requested, and I'm gonna lay out some reasons why. One of the first and primary reason is I deal with sick people. I see a lot of people every day that come up a road name off of Woolly Street at 187 South Woolly Street. I've been there 60 years. I have EMS come up there routinely. I've got elderly. I work on all Medicaid in Florence. No other dentist does that in Florence but a few, which means I work on the elderly, the deprived, the handicapped, the disabled. And they're gonna be coming up on Arrow Road on the back end of a two-story condo, which is only 15 feet from the line, which would be a disgrace to my patients to have that kind of confusion at all times during the day. Luckily, I only work four days a week, so Fridays would not be of concern. I'm concerned about the elderly, and that building was built in 1958. It was Architectural Building of the Year in Florence, and it's being covered by a two-story building. It was totally unnecessary. It was not brought to my attention until I saw a demolition sign to tear it down. It was built, I think, in '41 or '31. I'm not sure right now. And when this initial sale came up, it was very interesting because I had multiple people that made office on the house, and I wanted to make sure that I was very careful who went in there. We've had, James Barnes was in there. Dr. Ed White was a dentist in there for years. And as a matter of fact, the Democratic Party had an office in there for about one year, years ago. So it's been served a long time. I've owned it a long time. And I was brought to my attention that the purchaser of the property had a wife that was interested in reconditioning and doing a historical restoration. The floors are beautiful. There were things about the architecture that she liked, and that turned me on because that would be a perfect set for someone that would be interested in that sort of thing to purchase it. My neighbors, I've got texts that were received by you folks today from four different neighbors, Ed Smith Company, Harrington Real Estate, Philip Lowe, David Lowe, myself, and a few others that have spoken against the project altogether. I was not personally noticed and have no record of, even though I was out of town, was not, nobody really rang my bell to go talk against the project in the beginning. So I did not come and vote or have any input on the project to start with. If I would, I'd have been the biggest duck in the pond over here, and I apologize for not letting that happen. Chris is a real nice guy. He's been very respectful to me, and I appreciate it, but it didn't come down the way it was intended to be, and I'm very unhappy about that. But I'm more unhappy about the structure and the way it sits on the property. It's like a big elephant beside me. The sun's not gonna shine on my front door. I have a side entrance where the EMS and the folks come in. The parking is absolutely pathetic. We've been fighting parking for the last 60 years. Harrington had a car towed last Thursday by Otis, and it's awful, the situation that we have. That's the worst thing. When I looked at the plat, there just does not seem to be enough room for 35 people who have more than one car in a family for a three-bedroom condo with the square footage that is there. And I don't, I don't subject anybody going two blocks to a park and send it to park their vehicle. They're gonna want to park right there in my parking lot, in my driveway, when I'm not there on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. It could be a major problem for me. The other thing is it was a shock to me that it was approved to start with, and I really hoped that the board would look and look back into the plat, look back into the design, and take a good look before it goes any further. The answer to what you requested us to say today was I'm totally against the annex of another additional unit. I think that's gilding the lily of an already crowded situation. I've got a list of people that are so against the entire project, and that's yet to say. This is not what we're here today for. But it does not make me happy. But I'm 85 in March, and I've seen everything. I've never been in this building, and I've never had any problem with anybody in Florence. I have no enemies if I do. I'd like for them to come forward. I've got patients that have heard about it. They're gonna ring people's bells off. It's just an unhappy situation that we could have this kind of complex in that area. I can't ask any questions. I'm just, that's about all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, sir.
For the information, I've got copies of all the texts that came if you didn't receive it from those five businesses that all surround that area, and they're totally disappointed at the approval of that minutes about the approval of the first project.
All right.
Not the one that we came here today to discuss.
Okay, thank you.
And I really appreciate y'all for being here.
Any questions? Hey, one second. She's got a question.
I have a question. You satisfied with the five unit. You just don't want the six unit?
The six unit, to me, is out of the question.
Oh, but five, you okay?
No, I'm not okay with any of the project whatsoever.
Okay.
But I had no notice. I couldn't prepare myself to come to discuss it. It was a shock to me. In the beginning, it was all about a historical restoration. I've been in Florence. I was born in 1940 with Dr. McLeod. I live in Florence. I've been a good person in Florence, and I can't believe I'm being denied something that looks like to me is something that should not be there. And I have a lot of folks that agree with me, and they've viewed the property. And if you want to go see a problem, go down the street behind my office, and you'll see a problem. The road you can't travel on. Where's the garbage gonna be handled? Who's gonna keep people? What are the people gonna do in an area where there's a small backyard that's 12 by 12 with a small fence around them?
Okay.
There's gonna be people crawling everywhere.
All right.
A detriment to my older people.
Sure. Any other questions for?
Dr. Hayden?
Yes, sir.
Let me, you said that there were other business people on that street that voiced your same concern. Is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let me ask you. Staff, have we got, do you get any texts, emails?
I did get, I forgot to mention that. I did get emails from Mr. Smith and Mr. Harrington.
All right, let's finish up with Mr. Dr. Hayden, and we'll get the do's. Any other questions, guys? All right, Dr. Hayden, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll ask anybody else who's against the project to come speak. Hearing done. I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion amongst us? What do we get on email or text?
I got an emails from Michael Smith and Hayden Harrington, and both of them expressed concerns about the parking situation.
Were they in favor of the, what was?
They were against it.
Okay.
But their main argument was that there would be parking issues.
All right. Any discussions, guys?
Yeah, I think this, this young guy, he was saying that the people that live in these apartments, some of them have to park on the streets. Can we get him back on? Hold on.
Sure. Who, the, yep, the in the blue?
No, right there.
Okay, all right.
I forgot what his name is.
This is Mr. Dowling, Teddy Dowling.
Okay. Explain to me, you were saying about the parking.
I think I was mentioning that when you come, when you come down Chevis, there's a lot of parking lots that aren't full now. And if you go to vibrant, see, you know, we're, one of the cities that we pattern after is Greenville. Greenville doesn't have a bunch of parking lots. They've got businesses that are tight beside each other, and that's what makes Greenville charming. And that's kind of my opinion, obviously. I mean, but it is true that with, and the city has adopted this with its zoning ordinance. They have, they kind of patterned after Greenville, and that's where you have higher density and less parking lots. So there's, there's, I mean, right across the street from us, there's a parking lot that could be developed into townhomes. And, you know, businesses change, like Aiken and Company's not, they don't have the foot traffic they used to have. But since COVID, you've got people doing everything more at home or online or whatever. So I anticipate we'll see more of this type development coming, and I think that's what the city wants. So I mean, I think that's what my points were. Did I ask you a question?
Not really, but.
Now, there will be on-street parking eventually, I think. The plan, and Elaine can talk about this too, the plan is to take Chevis Street and make it a two-lane street with more additional parking. Right now, it's a four-lane street. Elaine, do you want to talk about that? Am I allowed to say that?
We'll get that just, we'll get just now.
The question I wanted to know, I heard you say it's a lot of parking, and for those who are gonna be living there, like, if nobody's using no parking, they can park there. So what I'm understanding, just say Florence have a, you know, like the P-Confest is coming. Just say the people that you build these apartments for don't have a parking space. Because you're saying they can park on the street, right?
If there's parking available on the street, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, if one available. So if one not available, just say they might have to go all the way down to Florence Morning Park. What I'm saying is, we look like the parking is gonna be a problem for an extra unit, you know?
Well, we're losing three parking spaces by going to an extra unit. I think, based on, I believe my memory is right, we're going from 10 to seven. So it is more problematic, yes. But we got another family living close to town, which I know Elaine and those folks, they want like 900 houses. They want 900 families to be able to live downtown. What's the goal, Chris?
900 by 23.
So I think that kind of goes along with that, achieving that goal of having more people downtown by having another, you know, it's kind of a, do you want more people downtown or more parking downtown? It's probably a good question.
Can I?
Yeah.
Can I ask?
Yeah, you go ahead.
Yep. Mr. Keith, yes, sir.
Okay, so let me get this straight. Will you or will you not have parks for the, you're saying, is it saying seven parks for the six, for the six lots?
Yes, sir.
And what they're saying is you're gonna have more than seven cars in those seven?
I suspect.
How many bedrooms, I'm sorry, how many bedrooms per?
It's a three-bedroom.
Three bedrooms?
Now, the downstairs bedroom is very, very small. It's really a two, it's a two-bedroom building that I turned into three because I know how important it is to have a bedroom and bathroom downstairs for older folks.
Right.
So it's only a 1,500 square foot unit. You know, it's likely to be empty nesters, I mean, maybe even somebody single. But they will have to, before they come buy a townhouse, they're gonna have to consider parking. I mean, I'm sure they'd have compact cars. I mean, it's gonna be, you know, as a developer, you kind of, you weigh all the pros and cons of, you want something that's aesthetically pleasing. You want something that's affordable. You want something that has the right number of rooms and bathrooms and pretty colors, and you want something that has conveniences.
On the average, on the average three-bedroom condo, how many cars do you think would be per condo? What do you, what's your honest opinion?
One and a half car. I mean, you know, some will be one, I suspect, and some may be two.
Right.
So, yeah, they, they're, they'll be, we'll need maybe another park or two. But a lot of those parks may be in the evenings or on the weekends, you know, because they're gonna go off to work or whatever.
Gotcha, okay. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
So if you can stand up, which is a lot, two, three, four, five lots, and two, three, four, you know, the.
I can't hear you, Ms. Dees.
Speaking of that, right, there'd be five.
I was just asking, would you consider just doing five so they can have additional parking instead of parking on the streets?
The five was approved previously.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
So this, so this.
So this is, the six is extra.
We would like to do six. We think that would be more beneficial to the community.
Okay. I was just, just over taking that one more time. That's all.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
Handicap accessibility. Where's the handicap spot?
Speak up, please.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's required.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Question, oh, okay, hang on. We need to get back on course here, Jerry. So we closed the public hearing, but the commissioner had a question. So the public hearing's closed. We gotta stick with commissioners having any questions. So do y'all have any questions that weren't asked of anybody else here?
I would be interested to see what the last sketch had looked like as far as the parking with the five.
Well, you had 10 parking spaces versus the seven. That's what it boils down to. I have a few questions to ask of staff. Is it in the long-term goal to make Chevis a two-lane?
We're, we're still working with DOT on finalizing the plans. That was one of our goals originally, but we're not sure if we're gonna be able to attain that. We do have, currently, there is on-street parking. That is one of our, it's allowed two-hour parking during daylight hours along the Warley Street and the Chevis Street areas.
Now, hang on. You, only two-hour parking?
Two-hour parking during the daytime. They can park there.
What's considered day? When the sun is out or?
I believe it's eight to five.
Eight to five.
Don't, it's eight to five, eight to six. Somewhere in that range. It's normal work hours.
Right.
When people would be at work and businesses would be coming and going. We would like to change that when we do the corridor enhancements in that area to allow on-street parking because, you know, there, there's likely to be more residential in this area.
Right.
And, you know, to convert that to on-street parking.
And that would be from Coit up to Pass where King?
That's, that's right, in those areas where it's wide enough to allow it.
Right.
And, you know, in the central business district zoning, you know, onsite parking is not a requirement. You know, that's, that's part of a downtown, and it's part of the, oftentimes, the city's obligation. That's why we're building parking garages. That's why we, as, as areas change in their character and development, we may have to allow on-street parking. You know, in many cities, residential, that, you know, residents of the area have parking permits that they're issued. So, you know, residents can park on the street during all hours, and then visitors would have, you know, certain requirements, like two-hour parking. And we may have to move to a system like that. But it's our intent to adapt to those downtown, you know, you know, much like Greenville and other areas.
Sure. Charles, yeah. But as, I'll just tell you that, me being the chairman, I usually have to listen to Drew say this, but I'm gonna say it when Drew's not here. You know, Drew says we're doing the business of the people, all right? He's a great chairman and, but we also, as I've said many times, I'm a landowner advocate. I believe if you meet the regs, you meet the regs. So here's where we listen to both sides and weigh the pros and cons and the commissioners vote. So any other questions from the commissioners? Any other comments from staff, anything else?
I just have one.
He's standing. I will allow you, yes, sir, I will allow you to ask a question, only because you may tan my hide if I don't.
Come, come to the podium for me.
Help me be unconfused on the map that was shown on your screen in addition to this map. And also, Chris, the developer said there were seven parks.
Can you state your name, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Billy Poston. I live in Florence, South Carolina.
Yes, sir. All right, what's your question?
The map that you presented right there is like this, is showing five parking spaces, and Chris himself just said there were seven parking spaces.
Well, there's two adjacent to one of the homes turned.
They're parallel parks.
Parallel parking.
Okay, I just, I was.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just, I was unclear, I wanted to be.
Yes, sir, yeah, there's two adjacent to the actual townhome.
Well, thank you, that's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Perfect, all right. All right, any other questions from the commissioners, comments?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Comment. I'm all for growth in downtown Florence, in the city of Florence, and I do believe that, and my wife is one that wants to move downtown Florence, or that's one of her dreams, like someone else said in here. But so far as, you know, progress being made, that's something that council's gonna have to determine so far as, you know, changing laws in the city. Now, when you have this urban, urban apartments, I think was mentioned, and those apartments are in, inside a public garage, is that right? Is that how that works?
You mean the Emerson apartments?
Yeah, Emerson apartments.
Yes.
How does that work with the?
There's a free parking garage right next to the apartments.
So they, so it's pretty much.
On-site almost.
On-site parking. Okay.
Well, I have a question about the Emerson.
Emerson, that's right, I'm sorry about that.
Can you turn on your microphone?
Sorry. So with the Emerson, was the parking lot, was a parking garage done after the Emerson was approved or was it done before?
It's all one project as far as I can, all one, approved all at one time.
Okay.
But let me just make another comment. We, we, we have to put our personal feelings aside. Obviously, we have to listen to both sides, okay? But as, again, Drew has the white hair, so I'm gonna call his experience. We are here to look at this sketch, and we, we make decisions because we're put here by the public, but the staff members tell us what's, if it meets the regulations or if it doesn't. Now, I'm a firm believer, just because something meets regulations doesn't mean it's automatic. But again, if you meet the regulations, we need to have good reasons why we aren't gonna do it, all right? So each councilman, each commissioner needs to think about that. So any other questions at all? I'm gonna call for the motion. We have a motion to approve, we have a motion to approve?
I approve.
Motion to approve, second?
Second.
We have a second. Time to vote. The ayes or four?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's hold their hands up so we can count.
Aye.
So three. And against? Staff?
In the instance of a tie, that means the motion fails. So unless there's another motion made, then.
All right, that motion has failed. Are there any other motions?
So does that mean it goes back to the original?
It means this has failed, it means that this presentation has failed. So they would have to revert back to the original approval.
Their original approval has passed, so they are allowed to move forward with that. So they, they could either bring back a different proposal to the board at some point in the future, or at this time, that motion has failed.
All right. So it's adjournment? Do you hear a motion adjourned?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All right, we adjourn.